The pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the true republic of which is China. Our nation is a sovereign state, individual is what their children address to us.
All right, I'm starting off listening for a motion to approve our regular session minutes of April the twenty first. I'll make the decision.
Second vote?
Yes. Um, okay, public comment, we've got a couple of speakers tonight, let's start with the Henderson Road Development.
The street. There's no deputy tonight, by the way.
Okay.
What do we best stand here?
It does fun.
Perfect. Good evening, Annie Richardson with Onyx and East, two forty three North Fifth Street, Suite four one in Columbus, Ohio. And here I'm with.
Uh, Luke Rice, Onyx and East, Columbus, two forty three North Fifth Street, Columbus.
And I'm line acquisition and development manager for ONE and have been handling most of the development that's happened up to this point on Henderson Road. And Luke here is our area construction manager and we just wanted to come out today, put some faces to names and answer any questions that you, the trustees as well, many of the staff might have as we get started on construction and and look towards delivering some units here in the next twelve to fourteen months.
So twelve to fourteen is what you guys?
Yep.
How many units did you guys send up?
Twenty five single units.
Okay, and are you guys? Is it purchase rent? I know that there was.
Yep, so these ones will be rented out by ourselves and our capital partners as well as the property management group that will hire any of the projects.
Do you have a clue who the property manager is gonna be?
We don't have that finalized yet, but once we get a little bit further into construction, we'll be interviewing folks from around town. It will be someone that's local here to Columbus and our other communities. We've hired property managers on project by project basis with whatever makes most sense for that particular project. Any other question?
It's not gated, right?
It's not, no, so one single entrance, but you know, it's a private street, but it'll be built, will be built to a public standard.
Yeah, can we make sure, do you have business cards at all?
Uh, I do, I do, I'm in the south of the city.
For both of you?
I do as well.
Yeah.
And make sure that the road superintendent, the zoning person and the police chief, as well as Luke there gets cards, so they have it on hand. I know that we know you.
Yeah.
We appreciate that, just in case something comes up, I'm sure you, and a few other things, so.
Yeah, and I think it would make most sense if there's any questions or comments or things that we need to address. If you guys don't mind reaching out to myself and then I can coordinate to get it to Luke, or if there's somebody else that's handling that within our company, I'm happy to distribute that information.
Watch out for the sign, you got it.
No, Rick and I have had some great conversations last bar as we get back, or as we get further into permitting and things like that. I'm sure we'll be working pretty closely, so any other questions?
Oh, let's send you the email that A B.
Absolutely, will do, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anything on Brookside?
Oh, thank you very much for, we have garage sale.
What garage sale?
Garage sale, kind of got rained out a little bit.
Yeah.
So, but thank you for being ready and willing to be over there, so. Uh, Worthington Hills.
Same thing, thank you for being there, got rained out a little bit.
Um, thank you.
And I noticed we got some complaints about the entrance, so I'll talk to the new president, give him a chance to talk with him. Uh, I'll make sure that he gets informed before, so everyone knows now that's the new president of Pacific Enterprises, so.
You mentioned the entrance.
Entrance. Grass, don't worry about the tree.
Okay, you're ahead, got it.
The trees were good, trees were.
Oh, okay, we look good, no problem, all right. Um, and then we have a, some speakers, Jim, if you wanna, uh, yeah, I don't know. Can you get the podium and just, if you guys, you guys, you can use the podium, if you don't, if you could just sit down, you can just, yeah.
I'll park on the podium, yeah.
Okay.
So, hello everyone, good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak at today's meeting.
Great.
Thank you, my name's Jim Rossi, I live on fifteen twenty four Candlewood Drive, this is David Heinz there also. So we're, we came to talk today about, I know we communicated via email many times on this topic. Really just have, just haven't heard anything, any updates, wanted to just come to the meeting and find out, you know, what, what the story is, what the status is with the antiquated storm drain.
So, Jim, I think the last, my last email was kind of where we're at today on this thing. Now, the one thing that I, I would tell you that I was unaware of with the building plans that Heinz had gotten from the club, and I, you know, again, they were back. There's two things, one is I was under the impression that that stream was, was somehow was like a pretty, I didn't realize that it was on the club's property. And that, um, and then all of the issues, and then the other thing was, and what I'd said in the email was, that, you know, from my standpoint, it looked like there was some regrading done, which, you know, your email said, yeah, we kind of regraded. So, um, there's a couple of things from my perspective that, um, you know, kind of came to light because we did the, we did the engineering study, Franklin County. The storm and like we had talked about, I mean, a lot of the things that were designed for Worthington Hills, you know, didn't anticipate everything up. And things that they're doing now are, are. So, what we're left with is an infrastructure that is gonna be really, really, difficult to do anything with. And right now it's a seventy, seventy-two inch line that goes through it and basically is taking all of that drainage. Now, the one thing that I felt with like regrading, it's kind of like your bathtub, it's like you got this kind of wall. And if you take the bathtub and you take one of the, one of the edges of the bathtub, what used to be the grade here is now the grade up here. And, and I think that shows some of the flooding that you guys are seeing when, when you guys, when we have the, the rain events. So, that's kind of where I kind of landed on this in terms of, of the flooding on it. Have you guys seen, you know, I know we've had a couple of pretty good rains, like this past weekend, it wasn't a hard rain, you know, so to speak, but it was a steady rain. Did you guys see any, you know, any flooding when we have a steady rain versus, you know, when we have like a hundred year flood? The one that I know that flooded out the, you know, your backyard and came out onto the club view, that was a, I think a hundred year event. If I recall correctly, or a two hundred year, I can't remember.
When that happens, why is it gonna be undone?
Yeah. So anyways, so like yesterday's event, did you guys see flooding in your backyard? I know that there was, it was a steady rain and a, so I'm just trying to understand like, when does your backyard, and did you guys ever get to the point when we first met where it was halfway up your, halfway up your shed area?
Well, so, very easy, first question, the steady rains, it can handle the system, it just, it just, the creek rises, I don't know, maybe a foot.
Right.
Um, but it can handle that and everything passes through without any issue.
So yesterday you didn't see anything major?
Okay. Yeah. Um, now, when it gets a heavy downpour, that's when it floods the backyard. Um, now, as you mentioned, the hundred year flood, which we had, um, we had one in March and then we have another one two months later in May, I think it was twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Um, so that, we had the hundred year twice that, that year. Um, so the, and this, before we regraded, we, we had the same issue.
Okay.
Um, basically what we did is we added on a porch and we, and we were on, our house is on the side of a hill. We dug out some of the hill and we put a basement underneath the porch. And we took that dirt we dug out, we put out in the yard to kind of hope to, hopefully build that up a little bit more, so that we have some, you know, so it would help protect a little bit. But these really, really heavy rains that come through, they come up over that. Um, so really the back, probably, I don't know, two thirds of our backyard is unusable because it does flood. And our neighbor's yards is the same way, and then I know our friends on Candlewood Lane have also had some issues when it gets, when the culver gets above, uh, when it gets above the culver to go straight through to Candlewood Lane and down to the club field, that.
Right. But your property line, um, a majority of that backyard or that back area is the, is the club's property, is?
Or the easement, I think it is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I, you know, looking at the property maps, it looks like, I was really surprised that like how much the club owns on that side of the street. You know, I didn't realize that, I thought your guy, I thought all the property lines on that went like pretty close to the street, but it's, it's pretty interesting to how much the, how much the club. So, were you guys living in the house when the club did all that regrading?
No.
Okay.
We moved in in nineteen ninety seven, so we've been there for twenty-eight years. Um, I remember our next door neighbor, Norma Holmes, she, um, she was there when they did, she, she was the original owner of the house next door to us and she was there. And, and when they re- regraded that and built the pond and everything.
Yeah.
She used to say, she said they used to have a boat out, a boat dock out back, where they used to boat on that pond that's back there now, which is very interesting to me, right?
So was there any change, did she mention any change in, in the flooding that since they built that pond to, you know, to where is, you know, like what you're experiencing today?
I don't recall which.
Yeah, cause her backyard, that backyard still floods like ours does as well.
Yeah.
Theirs doesn't drain, ours eventually does drain out, you know, makes it unusable, but it does drain. The, the house next door to us, it doesn't drain, it's just still sits there, even yesterday's water is still.
Still there.
Still sitting in there, in their backyard, we walked through it today, um, just, just to look at it.
Yeah, cause we have another, and not to get off this area, but we have another area that, um, over where, um, Club View and, um, Heinz, what's the South View?
It's South View.
Yeah. So what, the, the thing about, so there's two drain lines that when it gets light, it's kind of the same thing, it becomes a river behind the club and, you know, all those houses. But what's interesting is a lot of the houses were designed to have, um, basically emergency floodways. So all of that water, if it builds up too high, it actually comes out between the houses. So it looks like everybody's like, oh my gosh, it's flooding, but actually it was designed to, you know, if it gets, and, and it carries out, it carries it out into Club View. So, and they haven't had any, they haven't had any water damage, um, uh, we've had a couple, you know, same two, you know, storm events, you should have seen those two lines, they were, I mean, it was just, you know, water coming out. So, you know, I don't know unless you guys have any other, um, the one thing that the engineer report did say is that, you could increase the volume by adding another, um, storm line that would go down. But, you know, it basically break off and go down that way. And I just know that the original, you know, the original numbers that the, that the club was, you know, talk, or not the club, the county was talking about was, I mean, it was a lot. I mean, almost to the point where it, to be able to consider it. Now, I did say that, you know, we've been, um, we've looked at grants and things like that that, you know, could potentially, but right now, nothing, nothing on the radar that this would be something that we would address in the, in the near future.
Where would that, that why, where would the split go to?
So the split would go down, Candlewood, it would go down Candlewood and then it would reconnect, um, and eventually it would get into that big huge storm system behind and then.
Down the school?
Yeah, so it would be basically increasing, cause we can't do anything with the existing pipe, it just, you know, to, to put that in, it's just, we'd be, you know, with other people's properties, it would, and a lot of times that seventy-two inch pipe is right off of people's, you know, foundation, you know, why they designed it like that, who knows? So the idea was to increase the volume that the storm is able to do underground and not have it go streets. But when it is flooding, it is doing what it was designed to do, is to go up, unset up underground, up over, and then using streets to, you know, to accommodate the volume. Um, I can't remember any other, um, storm events, have you guys since twenty twenty, and those two back to back, have you guys had any more?
There was one in the late nineties.
But since twenty twenty?
Yeah, I mean, we've had several floods in the yards, we had.
Yeah, just kind of like, but not where, like, cause I remember when I came over to show, you guys showing me, it was like halfway up your.
Yeah, yeah.
That was that.
Yeah.
That was your storm.
Yeah, right.
The first one arose.
In February twenty-two, we had a really bad, bad storm, the backyard was pretty bad, and then April of last year, it was pretty high.
Okay.
Uh, we've got pictures of all of those, just for reference.
Cause I'd, I'd like to, if you have the dates on those? Cause, um, I'd like, you know, because they track the rain balls that we've had and you can, and they'll assign the like, you know, like we were saying, those are two one hundred year starts, since it's fifty years, so. Kind of like delving in on what is the storm event that, and really for us, it's more about, it's not so much flooding in your backyard that is our concern, it's flooding your house and creating property damage. Like flooding your backyard, um, is, I mean, we've got people over Brookside that are, the backyards are constantly, you know, soft and wet because of over the years. So really for us to do anything is when people are having property damage, where it's like my basement is flooded, several times a year, that, then we got an issue, but I, I don't know if that's what you guys are, what you guys are experiencing.
Well, I, I'll go ahead, Jim.
I'm going.
This pipe, when I shot the grade on it, anytime it's running full capacity, it's gonna be about four inches off your patio. There's, that's, when I shot level, the top of that pipe is right near the edge of your patio.
Okay. And we, but we don't know what storm event is creating that.
Yeah, I can't remember what the, uh, our report said, for a full capacity.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's designed for a fifteen year storm at least. Um, today's development standards don't design for more than fifteen foot, they, for fifteen year flood standard. Uh, the hundred year, the fifty year, they're gonna show a flood plan, that, that onto the road.
And how long is your backyard safe? Well, I guess, how long has it stays?
It drains quickly, once, once the, once the rain stops, the heavy rain stops, it actually drains pretty quickly.
Okay.
But then there's all the, you know, the soggy.
Yeah.
Mess.
And I guess that's what I'm talking about is the sog, you know, like being able to get on it and.
Best part is saying how long that lasts.
Right.
Cause it's, this depends on how evil the storm was.
Right. Well, I think from my standpoint, I'd like to get the event, like if you guys have documented, it'd be interesting to see the dates and then compare that to the rain event that, that happened. Cause what I do really like to kind of dial in is, okay, we know a hundred year is bad. Fifty years bad, is it twenty-five, you know, what are we experiencing more of? Cause obviously we're gonna have more twenty-five and fifty year events than we are a hundred year event, you know, just the way things are. So I would like to, to know what that is, but, and you know, that, the only, the really only option that the engineering, um, thing came out was just increasing the volume. And that would be adding more storm underneath, uh, Candlewood and, you know, Collie Way and, you know, that area, that Collie.
No.
Candlewood.
Candlewood lane.
Right. Yeah.
I am, does OPWC grant money?
If you could, can you get OPWC grant money for storm?
I, Jim, for sure. Well, I understand it had a share going.
It doesn't, like, L-TIP, but we were awarded for the resurfacing.
Yes.
Does not cover storm sewer. Skip. Skip, with all the capital improvement. But we would have to score high enough and show the damage from flooding. We would, we would need more property damage than like, I think in this, these twenty twenty, the majority of your basement, then I think there was a car lost on Candlewood Lane. It was in, in the water.
When, when we had that major, I know you were on, you were there, what, was there any of the properties that, you know, had?
They got close, I haven't heard of any more water getting into the houses.
Yeah.
There was a gentleman on, uh, Candlewood Lane where his car was parked at the end of the driveway and water did get about halfway up the doors.
Okay.
On his car. Uh, but I don't know if that would be considered.
Nobody else had any water with that amount, cause I remember.
Yeah, we've heard that other people have, we've talked, like, I thought one of the new guys who's been there two years and people he bought the house from, sunk Candlewood Lane. He said that, the house he bought, the lady said that their basement had flooded.
And Mrs. Holmes who used to live next door.
Yeah.
She wasn't able to go down into her lower level, it's a, it's a split level. She was older, but when her daughters went in there, they found it was just soaking wet, like down in there, so that, you know, they had, she had like.
And that was two events, those two events back in twenty twenty.
Right, when we first started this, this process.
Yeah.
I mean, we have photos of this happening since nineteen ninety-seven when we moved in. The realtor that sold us the house, we asked about that creek, we're like, what, what goes on there? And, oh, it's fine, nothing happened, and then the first month we lived there, a storm came and we have photos.
Oh yeah, the first time we saw that water raging through there, you know, you, you know, creek that's this wide, all of a sudden now it's thirty feet wide, we're like, oh my god. It's shocking to see, really.
Well, it's frightening too, when you don't know, you haven't, you know, now we're kind of used to it, except for when it gets four inch away from our patio.
Yeah, well, and that's it, you know, the other thing that, and the reason why, you know, it's the, the available thing of a storm is like from our standpoint, cause everybody Brookside, you know, um, always asks us like, hey, what can you guys do? Well, there's no easement, there's no drainage easements back there, it's literally property line, property line. So we don't have any, the township has no ability to work within, you know, cause it's private property. So it really, you know, and you guys are kind of in the same situation where you got the club, and then you got you. And it's like, that's property, so, and then being on the club's property, so I don't know whether or not, you know, what the update, cause we have the same issue over at, um, over at Club View, uh, where you guys have kind of gotten an agreement where we're clean, we've, we've been able to clean that out and keep on top of it since, since then.
Yeah, that was the, the major problem at the school ones when all the water came. A lot of, there's a lot of leaves in that back with drainage ditch that bogged the, uh, the grates on top of us too. Too, cause it's, it's two catch basins, one large catch basin, four by four grades. We built a new trash pile grate that kind of takes the water, as it plugs, the water is, and the water rises, it continues to drain in.
But you guys have also been doing, you know, regular maintenance on that pipe, you know, in that.
Yeah, we check, um, a half a dozen spots before all the heavy events.
You check ours too?
Usually, yeah, we walk back and check, make sure there's nothing blocking that, that inlet.
Well, and what does it, what does it look like inside there? Does it look like it's pretty sturdy still? My, my fear is that it's gonna cave in somewhere.
Hey, you guys, you guys literally walked it, they have.
I've got a video walking the, the whole way through it.
Remember you saw them, so.
It's open the whole way. There's really no structural problem, we find it all.
Cause I mean, we've seen some huge trees come washing down, I mean, one of them was as long as this table. Uh, we had to chainsaw it to get it, to get it out of there, I mean, also it was in our backyard, it's.
Yeah, cause when our backyard drains, then that stuff is left, we had to.
I, do you ever see, like, how, how often do we walk that to make sure there's no debris or anything like that in there?
Uh, we'll pop drains, the, the manholes along the route to see if there's anything in. That's usually if there's gonna be a blockage, it's in one of the manholes.
Yeah, we would see that, as it would be cut up over the.
I don't really encourage walking it.
No.
Um, I mean, the confined spaces, it's really not safe for us to be in there all the time, checking out. So we do, we do check the manholes quite a bit, um, after the big events, like in twenty twenty, the water rises and the manholes actually, a lot of that debris gets put up inside the, the manhole. Uh, and then we just, we gotta knock it down, with just a spot where the water rises and pushes that, like sticks and stuff and packs them into the, whatever, twenty-four, thirty-six inch pipe that's going down into the structure.
I, I know that, put you on the spot, do you remember the, the study that we did conduct, or had conducted? Do you know how much that, when we were talking about shooting Y off of the system, do you know how much that was estimated cost?
I have, I do not remember the cost, I just remember the county was not recommending it due to the cost.
Okay. So when we're down at the county engineer's office on Monday, when we bring this subject up and see if, I just wanna know if, if that grant funding would pay for it first, confirm that, and second of all, how much would be available to us? I, I remember the cost being, cost per gig, let's just say that. I mean, we couldn't, I thought it was almost like a fourth or a fourth, or a third of our budget, our entire budget. There's no way that we're gonna do that.
How much is that?
Huh?
How much is that?
I think, I would say it was around a million to a million five, something like that. My guess was that.
It was a shocking number.
It's a shocking number, so let us bring it up with the county engineer to see if that funding option would even be available. I'm not committing that we're doing anything, but we can, we can look at it, the study's a study and it's the only option that was given to us as, you know, besides what Andy has indicated, that, that whole infrastructure goes behind houses that are really close to houses. Now, no way that we're gonna be digging up person's entire backyard right next to their house to put a new line in, this is, it's not gonna happen. But if there's that second option, that Y, we can look at funding, only if funding's available out there. That's, that's not ours, cause we don't have dedicated funding for that purpose, we're gonna have to find some other way. Again, I can't commit to it, but we ought to at least ask the question, is that money available for that focus? And you guys know that the science behind that would allow that to work?
Well, we didn't actually get to that because like I tell you, the, the price was so extravagant, it was like, whoa.
Yeah, I think what they were looking at is just volumes and what it would take in order to, you know, increase the volume to at least provide it. So, so basically what it is, is you got the seventy-two inch pipe that goes this way. By adding more capacity down this way, and that would mean digging up the road, dropping a pipe in, just like you would see in a new subdivision. Now, how big that pipe is would be, you know, we don't know. So, um, I think that's what they were saying, is that it would increase the volume down Candlewood, you know, so instead of it all going down one, you gotta go down two. So, but yeah, the price, you know, the price was, and, and I think so, two things to help support that is to proving property damage, you know, like, hey, we're, we're. Yeah, that's gonna be the big thing, like I had said, you know, being able to do it. And number two, what's the, what's the rain event that, that would have? So I'd be interested, like, if you guys have documented since that twenty twenty, which I know you guys have, just to get those dates.
You can pump the dates?
Yeah, just the dates, because then I, there's a chart that you can go and you can say, all right, the date, this is how much rain fell. And then it, and then it tells you what the, what the storm was, you know, they're caught, they, like yesterday's rain, they'll document that and they'll tell you it was a whatever. Yeah. So I think it's basically saying to these guys, like, hey, number one, we got property damage, and number two, um, this is, this is the storm event. Like if they, if you say, hey, at a hundred year storm, we get a little water in our basement, that's not gonna, that's not, it's not even gonna move the needle. They're gonna be like, it was a hundred year storm. And if you say, well, we had two back to back, they're gonna be like, well, we had two one hundred year storms back to back. But if we're saying like, hey, at a twenty-five year storm, we have water in our basement, that's a different, that's a little bit different of a story. So I think it's balancing those two and giving us enough, you know, facts to go and say, this is something we, you know, is there grant, is there grant money available, so? Yeah.
Sounds fair enough.
And if you're, you know, to be interested in talking to your neighbors and seeing if they, you know, again, they're probably not documenting it like you guys are, but have they had, have they had water or have they had storm damage in their basement and being able to talk about that?
Yeah, we can ask them also and see if they have any information to move the spot in.
Yeah.
And you were given that study, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think everything we have has been shared back and forth, so.
Okay.
Anything else we check into?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for that. So it's next Monday you're gonna, what is today?
Yeah, today's Monday.
The twelfth. Next Monday you're gonna.
I already remember his numbers, so.
You have.
Twelve, I remember the twelfth.
Okay, that's when you're meeting to find out.
Yeah, we're, we're there for another purpose, obviously, but we'll tack it on to the agenda.
Okay, that sounds great.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks, um, so far, who are we so far? You guys?
Yep.
Evening.
Evening.
Happy to say that, uh, we have finally completed the salt barn. Long, long overdue. I know both Ian and John, uh. I'm happy that it's finally complete. We did have some challenges, uh, to get those, to, uh, to get us to this point, but, um. But right now they are complete. Um, the next step's gonna be to schedule a meeting. Once you guys have approved that you guys have taken a look at the paint, um, and the gate. I think those were the only deal, the two punch items that we had.
Uh, they've been completed.
Yeah. Once you guys are satisfied with that, then my next goal is gonna be to, uh, schedule a final walkthrough with the contractor. Um, and with Ian, um, and sign off on the final acceptance of the project. Um, part of those close-up documents will be a workmanship warranty. And then a warranty typically on any equipment, um, or material that you guys have. Uh, the only warranty that I am aware of on this one is the workmanship warranty. And there should be a warranty for your fabric that covers, uh, the canopy. Uh, so we'll be getting that from Daryl. Um, and then we're getting the workmanship warranty from Easy Dot Construction.
And when did, when did those warranties start? After final?
After final.
That's when the timer starts?
That is when the timer starts.
Okay.
It's once it's, it's accepted. Um, contractor could make an argument that his final acceptance was when it was installed. Uh, for those particular items, including the wall, but I don't see this contractor having any issue in. Putting, my goal is to put the start of that workmanship warranty as of the date of that meeting, that final walkthrough meeting.
Okay.
Um.
Any idea how long those, those last two?
The canopy itself? Um, they come in standards of, of warranty, so they start with a, I believe it's a ten, fifteen, twenty-five. Uh, there is one that is a thirty, but the mill for that one's way thicker. Um, I gotta look back on this one and, and see exactly which one we, we had selected. Um, but they kind of run like the, like your shaggle group essentially.
Warranty was for the canopy, I wanna say it was only one or two years, but the life expectancy. They're saying fifteen to twenty years on the, uh, the fabric. All depends on how it's taken care of, uh. The installer that was out here, he recommended having somebody come in every couple of years and tighten and adjusting the. Cables that are in that to keep the canopy, uh, tight.
If that ever needs replaced, you just basically are replacing the fabric, the fabric, yes, yeah, everything else.
Every, your, your whole structure is coated so that salt doesn't interfere with it. Um, so you shouldn't have any issue with the structure itself. Um, but yeah, the fabric, depending on what mill you get, it, it depends what, what warranty they'll give you.
That looks good.
Yeah.
I think the paint looks good.
Yeah, I, I, I was having that conversation with Ian, I was a little concerned, cause. Um, I wanna make sure that they didn't get any paint on your canopy, no paint on your dry, on your parking lot. Uh, it seemed like they did a very good job in, in making sure that everything was clean and cleared. Uh, they had mentioned at one point spray and I told them, please don't do that, cause you're not gonna be able to control. The spray when the wind comes, um, but they ended up rolling it and I think they did a spectacular job on it. It looks well. I think the color you guys picked also. Kind of works a little bit and resembles a little bit of what the concrete color would have been.
Okay. That's the joint. Do you have any other questions?
John, any questions?
Hey Eli, is, is there anything we can treat that fabric with over the years to help? Extend the life expectancy of it?
There's nothing that I know of. I'm sure there may be some chemicals out there that, um. Can assist it. We can definitely follow up with Daryl. He's very familiar with that product, uh, and their manufacturers. Um, I'll follow up with him in regards to that and see if he has any recommendation. I know your concrete, there is some sealers you guys can use. Uh, we have the submittal for the one we used. Uh, in this case, there is a recommendation to use that every, I believe that was like every two years or so. Um. The rebar that was used especially for the concrete flo- uh, concrete floor was one that was co- uh, coated. That's not something that we had on the scope of work, but it's something the contractor took, you know, their liberty in doing that. Um, I think it also assists them to make sure that the work will be durable, uh, and will serve the purpose you guys have. Um, I don't think you guys should see any issue with that, but I would recommend to at least every two years or so. Um, clean it out, power wash it, and then come back and, uh, spray that, um, that sealant on there. Um, it will help. Um, we do know that there's some water that kind of comes back into the, uh, salt barn. Um, just from the grate of where, of where it was placed. So. With that in mind, I would, I would definitely make sure you guys are sealing that concrete at least every two years or so. And anything else? Not, the only other thing was there was an invoice. We left some money set aside for the close-up so that we could, uh. Make sure that that gets done and you guys are completely satisfied.
I'll take care of that.
Alright.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thanks Eli.
Well, I appreciate it.
Alright, thanks. I'll take it. Anything else, public comment?
You guys wanna say anything along those?
Yeah. Oh, please.
He's making me get up. I love it.
Keith Donnell from Courtyard Riverside. I think you all know you're with me, even the chief up there. Uh, I have a couple announcements. First of all, I wanna introduce Mary Kreitzer. The chairperson for the neighbors night out, which is gonna be on September ninth this year. Mary has seen her run around last year.
He wasn't running, let me tell you.
What is the event? I'm sorry?
It's September ninth.
Tuesday.
Hopefully, no rain day. We've been lucky so far in four years.
We debated whether we were gonna have the band back, but since this is a banner year for OU. O V, OU. I'm from, I'm from Massachusetts, so. Anyway, um, we decided the band should come back, you know, cause after all, that championship.
There you go. You get Brutus to come?
We're all working magic sometimes.
Talking, talking to Brutus and people.
You want the male or female Brutus? Most importantly.
You have to put up with it.
June twenty-second, um, we're having a farmer's market at the same place, in the clubhouse. Our, uh, Pam Kennedy's putting that together and we're gonna have the market set up. Just like we had before. I don't know if you've attended before, but, uh, it was great turnout. A lot of people loved it. We're gonna do it twice this year. Yeah, or do one, uh, October as well. But, uh, June twenty-second is gonna be dedicated towards retirement plans for Parrot Township Canine. We're gonna throw a little, uh, dog festival for them, I guess, whatever you call them. Uh. Anna Kennedy's, uh, daughter is a Franklin County Sheriff. She wants to be involved with that as well. Well. Uh, and then the only other date we're working on after that would be the. October twenty-sixth, which is the children, grandchildren's trick or treat night for our neighborhood.
The Sunday.
The Sunday evening from four to six, you know. I know, we've had our Parrot Township police force out there. Protecting the streets and handing out candies. So that was all of the great positive. Other than that, um. Yeah, we're good. Yeah, just wanna keep you abreast of what's going on.
Well, thank you for showing up.
I'm trying to get Revelo over here. They just got, uh, organized finally with a HOA board.
Oh, okay.
Trying to introduce them to. The aspect of coming here, but.
For all their lots though, no?
They built out all of them, but there's like three more to sale yet. Like somebody who bought my house from the, where I lived next to the clubhouse. I sold that one. Somebody else bought it and then they moved over to Revelo, so.
Wow.
I don't know why.
One of the, one of the last houses to be completed in there.
Yeah.
Was one of the first houses to be started.
Oh, yeah.
With all the change orders.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Change orders and special orders.
Amazing.
As it closed, yeah.
Cause maybe there's another change. And it doesn't have to be the female that does it either, you know.
We're in the midst of a kitchen redo, I guess, is.
I think that's the worst thing that can be done in a house.
Yeah. You know, you're, you know, your marriage is strong if you can get through it. And this is our second time going through it, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Tell the house, buy a new one.
Right.
Okay, alright. If there's no other questions, we'll thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Zoning, um, I still have to do a repeat of last year's zone. Zone, cause, cause we had to go and, um, get a permit.
All the special.
Special events permit thing. No, the farmer's market doesn't.
Well, that's something separate.
So just, just to repeat.
Yeah.
That's their law, you're fighting.
Give me cream puff a chance you want.
I did get, uh, permission from Schmidt's family to, uh, hand out cream puffs for the horses, so.
I missed.
We thank you for what?
Always purpose.
That's.
You take care of the zoning companies.
What's that?
You take care of the zoning companies.
Yeah, all. It promised me a cream puff mother with clinic.
Hey, now I do put one of the Schmidt's boys in the Navy back in the nineties.
Right. Let's go down to zoning. Anything under zoning? Looks like we got a zoning resolution. Outside of that, Rick, anything?
Nope, that's it.
Everything going great? Getting your permits and everybody's.
Absolutely.
There's gonna be a troublemaker.
Ones I can't. I make them honest.
Alright, um, we do have a resolution, um, uh, so I move, um. To prohibit, a resolution prohibiting medical marijuana and adult-use cannabis operations, cultivation, dispensing. And processing pursuant to sections three, seven, nine, six point two nine. And three, seven, eight, zero point two five of the Ohio Rice Code. I still vote.
Second.
Vote? Yes.
Yes.
There was a delay. Alright, um, Road Department, Kevin Salt Barn, um. I had anything?
Uh, I don't have anything, uh, do you want to discuss the vacation with that ends?
Uh, yes, so we're. We're gonna be with the county engineer on, um, on the twelfth, our topic. Um, so we'll have a conversation with them regarding, um. The refresher on the process of it, uh, but we more or less wanna know if they're, they're willing to recommend. Uh, as it is now, they recommend to the county commissioners, county commissioners vote to it. I had a question from another township administrator from another township. Um, asked about, uh, could, could the county commissioners actually quit claiming deed into the township directly? Right after vacating it? So it's a question that we're gonna be raising with them. We'll kind of put that out there. So their attorneys can take a look at it, see whether or not that's an option. It would shortcut the process by a couple steps, which would be good. Um, but I don't know if that's doable or not. So right now the process is, is that they vacate the roadway. The pro- the property that, uh, is vacated then goes to the adjacent property owners and is split equally. Um, and we would have to have a, uh, an agreement with those property owners to put claim deed back to the township immediately after. Taking ownership of it. I would prefer to skip this step and just. So that would help everybody.
If that's doable, I don't know when, when, uh, that ownership, so some, some legal grapevine tells me otherwise.
Legal grapevine's gotta be done.
Alright, moving on. Anything else?
Rough chipping into today. Uh, the guys picked up eight loads, ran the entire route six times. Is it a little much? Is today the end? Today was the last. Well, Friday was the last day to put stuff out. Uh, I had to think it was raining today.
Oh, it was a serious lack of rush out there this year.
Yeah.
There was. Last year was pretty light too. I was going through the, the records. There was only ten loads picked up last year. Mark, that's all I have?
Yeah, fire any mess?
Nothing to report.
Please?
Uh, the only thing I have, we did the Bobcat Walk today in Brookside and had a couple officers. Uh, I remember the Bobcat Walk, they, the school does the walk through the neighborhood. So we had a couple officers the other morning and everything went nice and smooth. That's it. Nothing else.
Last question. You have to do like a dog walk last week.
Don't know, I wasn't here.
That is right, you were in the, uh.
Sharon Township was at the top of Club U. Where it comes out and splits and goes back, but, uh, I, I took a short video of it because again, the bus bike school. To the dog walk.
That's al- that's always towards the end of the school year. It was always kind of chaos, cause dogs don't go along. We participated in that.
Kids, parents, grandmothers, grandfathers, the whole.
The whole thing.
Like I said, I took a video because I'm just fascinated at the fact that.
I didn't know about it till I saw it on TV.
I don't see it.
Yeah. I was getting my hair cut Saturday morning at six o'clock and I was watching. And I said.
Where do you do your haircuts?
You know, when COVID was going on. Best time, by the way.
Yeah, that's absolutely, yeah.
John patiently waiting. John is up.
Uh, under old business, Pete is reviewing our local homeroom citations. Uh, we've not heard back from him because he's on vacation. Uh, I, I've heard that from other developers before that Pete's always on vacation, so. But as soon as he gets back, we will get those, uh, into circulation and begin to use those. Uh, I know Chief's very excited about issuing those. Uh, under new business, under healthcare transition, I sent all y'all today your. Member ID. Number, and we sent last week your, uh, group number, policy number. Uh, if you would need to go to the hospital, doctor, or some medical treatment before you get your card in the mail. Those are the two numbers you will need. I did communicate with a couple of guys today who received their. Actual hard copy cards in the mail, so they should all be here. Everybody should have them by the end of the week.
We got ours today. We talked today, remember I told you our mail wasn't come till like five?
Yeah.
Then before I left to come here, they all came and they were on charge.
Hey, John, the other thing, if you go online and you sign up on the Anthem site, you can download, you can get it, you can download the co- card. Uh, if the card's on there, they're digital, you can download, and you can download your.
Uh, if the cards are on there, they're digital, you can download. And you can download your Google Wallet or Apple Wallet, which is nice.
Uh, Mr. English, did, did you do that for your whole family?
I did not. I do not worry about, I only worry about myself these days. I told them, I texted them all and I said, here's your number. I would highly suggest getting on and everything, what they do with it, with that advice.
They named a great after you. I think it's called One Way.
That's right.
Yeah, Ameriflex cards are, um. They're gonna be here within the next two weeks. They told me it would take about three weeks to get the cards out and up and running. Uh, Michael Hopper is following up on that for me. If, um. He can't give me an exact date, then we'll reach out to our rep over at Ameriflex and just get a, a more solid date than that. Um, just a little life insurance update. We, um. We had a situation arise where the good folks at uh. HR Butler let us know that we're supposed to be charging tax to our employees, or not, the federal government is. For any life insurance benefit over fifty thousand dollars. So our employees have to pay a premium or pay a, a tax on the premium. For the extra twenty-five thousand dollars, which amounts to um, anywhere from three dollars to ten dollars a, a pay. Um, I reached out to Brian Still just to let him know. Uh, he was a little shocked that. We were gonna do that. He said he's never heard of that before. I sent him a copy of the IRS rules and laws and he talked with their legal people and then texted me back and said, the union is good with this, so. They're not willing to take on the IRS on this issue. Um, but it, it's gonna be a, a minimal amount of money that our rec, our employees will see come out of there paid, but it's, it's an IRS rule and they have to do it. Uh, we have an invoice, I think you guys saw it, for the signage, four thousand, forty-five dollars. Those are for the two signs that went up showing where Perry Township is. Uh, stop signs have been installed. We had, that is an item on the agenda, but those are in. Our concern was more for liability, cars exiting our parking lot. If, if there was a crash here and there was no traffic control device. Uh, would that put the, the township in a, a bad position, but those are in, so we're covered. And, um. All the lines are in for parking spaces, so that project is done. Salt Barn is done. We're moving on and moving up, folks.
Hey, um, the other thing on the insurance, if you guys haven't, and signed up for the, Mike had sent out a uh, thing regarding our uh, wellness portal. And in there I discovered, discovered there's a thing called Wellable.
Yes.
And you can sign up and we can get a little competition going. So right now, myself and Lori are the only two on the, on the thing. Right now, I'm winning.
You're beating Lori.
Me and Lori fighting zero points.
We'll stay out of this, right? You.
Right.
Continue the competition.
So.
Um, hey, one, one other thing with healthcare. We have HealthWorks and we have, um. Jeez.
Healthy.
Healthy U.
Healthy U. Thank you, Steve. Uh, Healthy U.
That was really, that was Luke.
Well, that was Luke. Thanks, Luke. Steve took credit, but anyway, nobody uses Healthy U that we're aware of. It doesn't cost us a lot of money. It's, it's, um. Ninety-six dollars a month for the whole township. Um. That might be ninety-six dollars a year. It's, it's really inexpensive, but it, what it is, is a teledoc program. Um, and we, I spoke with the, the folks about doing some education for our employees to help them understand the benefits of that program. Like if somebody has a sore throat, somebody has a sinus infection, as opposed to going to the doctors and making an insurance claim. They get ahold of the teledoc, tell them what's going on, teledoc and call in a script. It reduces their out-of-pocket costs. It reduces our exposure to the insurance company. So just as a, uh, heads up to the board, we're probably gonna put together some type of educational program for the employees. So they understand what that program is and how it works and the benefits of it. Um, I, I didn't know what it was. I, I finally asked, why do we have HealthWorks and why do we have Healthy U? And even the good folks at uh, McHotten Braebender didn't know the difference. They had to go and research that for me and come back with an answer, so.
I've used Healthy U. I've used it, my, I used it, my son had strep throat last year. I used it, just had to upload pictures of his throat and they called it a script.
Yeah. I've asked them to prepare a report for us just to show how many people actually used it, uh, in the last twelve months. So we have some idea, but I, I really think that it's a worthwhile benefit that might be able to help our insurance exposure to go down a little bit. That's just a matter of getting folks educated. So that's all I got.
Hey, oh, hey, John, did you, um, did you reach out on the insurance regarding, um, Mount Carmel being listed as additionally insured? Or listing them as an additionally insured on our policy?
I will do that when I get back. I haven't had a chance to talk to, uh. To be honest with you, I don't have the uh, Otarma guy's phone number with me to call. It's in my desk, so I'll be back on Friday morning. I'll reach out.
Yeah. Uh, this officer is looking, uh, I'll make a motion for uh, payroll dispersment.
Second.
Vote, yes. Uh, anything else for the good of the cause?
So, yeah, three things real quick. Hun- Huntington. Chief, when we talk about access to Huntington, something, something.
Say that again?
Amanda and Becky, accessibility to Huntington?
Yeah, I don't know. Amanda has access. Becky needs access to Huntington. I talked to Michelle. She said she was gonna work on that for her, but it. It allows both of them to be able to work on that account when they're not together. Uh, when Becky and Amanda are separated, they can't both and, and get into that account, so. Uh, Michelle said she would take care of that. I just haven't talked to either of them. Michelle's out of town and I didn't get a chance to call Becky to see if she got hooked up yet.
Um, Software Solutions.
Michelle's got that.
Okay.
She's handling that.
Are we doing demos or what?
Nope, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off. She's got it, so.
Andy, did you see that email I sent you about the portal today?
Portal.
From uh, Software Solutions?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I did see that, but uh, uh, Michelle and I talked and she's handling all that. She's, she's.
That's what I told the people that, when I talked to them, excuse me, when I talked to them today. Um, that Michelle would be the point and she would be the one setting things up with them, uh, but I, I just wanna send you. Uh, that portal since you're, you're kinda involved in that IT stuff with her and.
Yeah.
Uh, if you wanna log in and set up your own little account there, so when she and you are having conversations, you'll understand it.
Okay.
Traffic studies still.
Yeah. Um. Keith, did you get that data, the drug vendor?
No, I'm not because it's right before I left. Um, he's on my list to call tomorrow to make sure that whatever he needs, he gets.
Well, so he emailed, cuz I sent him an email today and said, he did, he goes, I haven't seen anything. He said, however. Um, he's making a job change, so he gave me a name of another person, so if you can send me that data, I'll reach out to him and just give him that data.
What, did he put in there what he needed? I don't remember any.
Just anything and everything that you guys have.
Oh.
Speeds, data, overtime. He just wants to, he just wants to get his arms around, you know, what's going on.
Cuz like, I mean, we go all the way back to when we.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, we all went back to twenty-one. I mean, literally, anything that he wants, we want specific dates. It's all on our website.
Oh.
Everything's there.
So you guys are continually. Oh, yeah. I've been uploading some of the speeds I made from all the signs to the website since they were installed. Alright, well, then I'll just. It's in our archives. Can you send me the link? Yeah. That's you. Perfect. Yep. Yes, more. Or something like that. Okay. Go ahead. John, anything?
No, the, no, we're good.
Yeah, that didn't sound drills.
Well, I was, I, I just, um. The, the club is asking about this parking lot and, and things. We've kinda turned that over to Pete and Jen to review. They're wanting. Uh, a lot of documentation. Uh, but nobody seems to know where it is or if it even exists. I talked to Joe today and Joe said none of what they want exists. Uh, since they were built before zoning actually came into, to play. Um, so. We'll see. I just wanna put that out there that the board, that. The club over there is wanting to have parking places. There are some things they need to do and now they're kinda pushing back a little bit, but that's okay. We'll, we'll work with them and get it done.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none? I move to adjourn. Second. Vote?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.